Hello, good afternoon everybody. It's that time of the week again where you've got to sit down and listen to someone, look at a bit of PowerPoint and that sort of stuff. Got a few exciting things lined up for you today. And so hello, my name is Matthew Emerson, happy to take you through. I did call it working from home, but I'm going to call it working at home now. I call it working at home 102 because it is the second of the sessions that we're doing. And I think we've made a couple of announcements, haven't we? We really want to hear from you as well now as to the sort of things you want us to concentrate on, the sort of things you want to know about. Today, however, we're going to have a little look at personal and professional development, that sort of stuff. We're going to have a look at bringing your own device or using your own device. There's not really anywhere to bring it to now, is there? So we'll have a look at setting up teams and setting up apps on a mobile device. There's some existing guidance for it. I've done a new one as well with some PowerPoint with some screenshots of how everything happens and the sort of information you need to enter. So we'll take you through that one. We're going to have a little look at mental and physical wellbeing. I say a little look because we've only got an hour for this session. And I don't necessarily want to take up the whole hour if we don't have to. Like we said, it's Friday afternoon, isn't it towards the end of the week? But it's important, I think, and it's, you know, it needs to be looked at properly. So we are going to consider our own mental and physical wellbeing and the things we can do to, to make it a little bit better for ourselves. We'll have a little health and safety reminder at the end about how to sit and, you know, eyes head level with the screen, wrists straight, all equal pressure. You know, we've all got our own chair now, haven't we? Didn't we pick those up the other day? And finally, a little bit about keeping in touch. And it's easy to keep in touch, isn't it through teams and that sort of stuff? But maybe there are some other options, maybe you want to consider those as well. And finally, the next steps. And that's what I was talking about at the beginning. You tell us what you want and we'll try and provide that for you. As ever, we need to just mention that there is lots of help around already, particularly around the applications and that sort of stuff we use. There's always the tell me what to do function that's available in a little. It's easy for me to say that's available in a lot of the different applications that we use. As well as the training for office and teams, that sort of stuff, the instructor led training, the videos that are available. We've got the modern workplace hub, don't forget that you would have perhaps picked up your link for today from there. And we've got Google and we've got YouTube as well, haven't we? For those sorts of things, remember I've said before, there are hundreds of thousands of people doing the same job as us all over the world. So there's plenty of resources that available. Well, I suppose before we look at that link, let's have a little chat. We've been working at home for a while now, haven't we? And we've adapted to a new routine, I guess, and perhaps more out of necessity than desire in a lot of cases. And I was thinking about this on my commute this morning and my commute takes me through my wife's office in the living room or working room as we call it now, or whatever you want to call it, and then into the kitchen. And that's my commute finished with. What do I do? Get the coffee on? Yeah, stick the coffee on, stick the kettle on, get the laptop out because I've had to put it all away, turn it on, get all my spaghetti and leads together, the wires for the power, the headphones, the keyboard, the mouse and all that jazz. Then by the time the coffee's brewed, I'll pop one of those delicious rustlers quarter pounders into the microwave. It's all right, this isn't sponsored by rustlers quarter pounders and other microwave essential foodstuffs are available before I clock in and start my working day. Day after day after day after day. Some of you that were here for the previous session, you'll know that we were on our way to Disneyland before all of the coronavirus happened. And I think the last session was on the day we were going to go there. It's my daughter's birthday on the 24th, that's come up quickly. And we've been thinking about trying to sort of party out, but obviously no venues really ready to commit to that sort of thing for a kid's party. So we could go to a park, get friends to pop in sort of three at a time, 45 minute shifts, that sort of stuff. We could postpone it till next year or we could just all go to the pub, I suppose. Hooray for coronavirus. Right, what's up first? Personal and professional development. Did you know that at Birmingham City Council, we've got a massive free resource called the Learning Pool? In the last session, we had a brief introduction to Birmingham Adult Education Service. They provide training around lots of the applications we use, Excel, Word, that sort of stuff, PowerPoint, as well as sort of some basic sort of cost centre manager type, budget type training as well. So it's quite a lot already available through them. But I hopefully you're going to be pleasantly surprised when we have a look at the learning pool. I've turned that little picture into a link. There's a couple of modern workplace advocates that might have a little rise smile when they see me do that. And then I'll maximize that window. So we're going to look at the learning pool. The address is up here. If you typed in HTTPS colon slash Birmingham dot learningpool.com, you would arrive at the landing page. Now I've gone to a login page asking me to log in, I'm not going to do that. I just want to show you the steps that are available for creating a new account first. If you don't have an account, and I'd be surprised if you don't, because this is where we've done all of our mandatory learning from, isn't it? You'll need to select a username. If you make that your login name that you used to log on to the computer, that's going to be a bit easier to remember. And then if you use a password which you, you know, don't share with somebody else, a password you can, you can remember something memorable, but with the right sort of combination. Use your work email address, it's a work tool, you don't have to use your work email address, but I found it useful to do so. As long as your first name and surname is filled in, you will need a little bit of information before you start, and that's going to be your payroll number. If you access People Solutions to look at your pay slip three days before payday like I do, just to make sure they've paid you, then you can check out and make sure that you have been paid. So you'll need your payroll number and you need your network ID anyway. Once you've popped that in, you click on request account and then quite shortly, a day, day or two, you will get an email notifying you on that you've been made live. You'll then go to the login page, you click on to login with your username and password that you selected when you created your account. Clicking once onto login, you come through to the homepage. Typical sort of navigation, you've got some dropdown menus at the top. They're called dynamic menus because they change depending upon which screen you're going to go into. There's a little banner here to draw your attention to some of the most sort of recent things, some of the things you might need to know straight away. Looks like there's three messages there. If you hover over them, they do stop so you can read them. Let's have a little look at what's there. Something about apprenticeships and something about, oh yeah, mandatory e-learning deadline extended. Oh, all right. Data protection, safety, quality to the 31st of July and the other seven modules to the 30th of September. Oh my gosh, oh, I'm so pleased I pulled a 13 hour day on the 30th of June to get them completed by the 30th of June, never mind anyway. So you've got a bit of, a bit of leeway there and quite rightly so as well, I think, you know, especially those families that have their children at home during, since almost the middle of March, isn't it? And could be all the way through the summer holidays up until the, the first, second or third of September. So quite right that there is a, an extension on there. Have a little look over on the, the right hand side. I'm just hovering over there, I'm just going to scroll down a little bit. So we've got some commissioned learning. So that's, you know, an external organisation, a company that's been commissioned to provide us with learning materials and resources. That's company called the Learning Curve Group. That link will take you to the pages that contain their learning. And there's also a link here to something called the Open University. I think you're going to be home a while. So maybe you want to have a little look at the Open University in the realms of personal and professional development. Just below that, yeah, scroll down a little bit more, you get a view of the, the upcoming events that are available. And I think upcoming most recent, yes, there's a menopause workshop and planning for retirement workshop, there you go, running back to back. What else have we got? Yes, let's look, there's a, oh, Unison have organised a wellbeing and Tai Chi event as well. Tai Chi being the, the ancient Chinese art of attention seeking. And then in the middle of the page, in the main part of the page, we've got some links here to various things, they're not all courses, some of them are just guides, that sort of thing. Oh, look, there's one there called Microsoft Teams. I might have to have a go with that one myself later. Have a look, see if I can learn how to use it. And then there's, there's this, what's this, something called a coronavirus or COVID-19, whatever that is. And there's some explanation about that, particularly picking up on the extension to the mandatory learning. You go a little bit further down, you might see sometimes learning pools referred to as I learn. So learning pool is provided by a company and I learn is our area of learning pool. If you need to speak to somebody about learning pool, if there's something you need assistance with, you've got a link here to their email address, learningmatters@birmingham.gov.uk. And then we're just going to have a look at some of these options down here. Now, you can find out a little bit more about organisational development, you know, what they're there for, how they can support you, that sort of thing. We've got the mandatory learning link. We've got management courses, as you can see, not going to read them all out. Down here, you've got some self-paced learning, that's quite useful. We're just going to have a quick look at that one. So if I click on self-paced learning, there are 68 different options. 50 of them kind of come under something called core skills, have a look in a mo, and 18 of them come under something called transitional skills. Now, I was drawn to some of these. These are my Voyager ones, obviously, there are some Voyager things you can access through there as well. And there are some no cost qualifications, so some free type qualifications you can access. And that's where a lot of the directorates have put a lot of their training, a lot of their courses as well. And then back up within your core skills, there's stuff like the appraisals that we've been doing, there's a lot of concentration on health and wellbeing, we're going to have a look at that later, aren't we? Both your physical and your, your mental health, there's some stuff around data protection, cyber security and so on as well. Okay, going to go back one page, just going to use that button at the top to navigate. Wanted to show you, there's an A to Z listing, obviously, it lists every course available A to Z. I think there's something like 186 different courses available in there, as well as the stuff from Open University and Learning Curve and Unison as well. We have a quick look at functional skills. You'll see there's some stuff in there which is particularly relevant to us. Takes a moment or two for the scroll bar to appear, there it is. We've got links to the Birmingham Adult Education Service. I was chatting to somebody this morning via Teams, just on chat, not on audio. They were asking about the availability of Excel and Word training. So shout out to you, Chris, for asking and invited him to join this afternoon and make him aware of the, the adult education link. There's something called Office 365 Help Support and Training. There's a lot of support available out there and I think sometimes it's quite difficult to find where it is. The modern workplace hub is your central point for IT type stuff, but a lot of that is also available via the learning pool as well. This is a typical Microsoft Teams Quick Start Guide. I didn't have to enrol or anything, didn't I? I didn't have to give my name or anything or who I was. And obviously there were 50 odd pages there and I'm not sure who wrote it or when it was generated, but I've had a look at it and it, it's all valid, it's all very useful. So please do feel that you can use any of those options that you see within the learning pool. I'm just going to go back to the homepage, just going to navigate to it there. Click on home or click even over here on home, just to take me back to the homepage. And all I want to do there is just remind you of the link, it's birmingham-learningpool.com. And I showed you the email address, learningmatters@birmingham.gov.uk. And mentioned the extension to the, the mandatory learning. I'll mention it again towards the end, but that's your learning pool. That's a really massive resource of free stuff that's available to you. Even the, the menopause workshop and the, the wellbeing and Tai Chi. Okay, so I'm going to be closing this one now, going to be opening some more windows in a bit, but we're just going to go back to PowerPoint now and we're going to move on to the next part of the session. So if you've just taken a moment to get your links and stuff, you're looking for something called birmingham-learningpool.com and you can search for that via the internet. You'll find links to it there as well, you find links on People Solutions too. Okay. Let's move on, let's have a look at our second one for the afternoon. Oh, look at that, Pokemon, we're not going into Pokemon unfortunately. Now, did you know that you can use a mobile device on the go to keep in touch and attend meetings and chat and access files and that sort of stuff? Now, I had it all set up on my, whatever it's called phone, my mobile phone, but I uninstalled, uninstalled everything so I could screenshot it as I went along. There is a document that exists already for it, it's out there, you can always access it, I'm going to show you where it is in a bit, I've got some links to it. But what I'll do for now is just show you the screenshots that I took just the other day, just have a little glass of water there. Pardon me, there we go. So you need to point your device, whether that's one of those laptop things or one of those tablet devices or your telephone, you need to point it at your app store, you'll be able to pick up, whether it's iTunes, is it, or iPhone Store or something? Pop your details, pop what you're looking for into the field at the top. The thing you're looking for is company portal, it's called the Intune Company Portal. I typed in company portal and they found it pretty quickly. You click onto install, if you've never installed an app before, that's how you do it, once onto install, it'll tell you it's downloading it. Mine downloaded, you know, a matter of seconds, doesn't take long at all. Once it's downloaded, you will get an open button. You click onto your open button and the first thing it wants you to do is to sign in. You're going to use your work email address for this because you're logging on to the, you know, your, your work version of Microsoft Intune, it's called, if they, the company portal. Once you've popped in your work email, click once onto next. And then it's going to ask you for your password. Now that is your ADDM password, the one that you'd normally pop in at half past six in the morning or whatever time you start. So you pop that in and you click once onto sign in, takes a moment, just checks really your credentials, make sure everything's valid, the combination of username and password, and then you get a little bit of reassurance. So it's telling you that your employer, Birmingham City Council, will not be able to access and will never see your call or web history, your location, passwords and all of that, because that's just for hackers, isn't it? That's just their stuff. What we will see, what Birmingham sees, what your, your employer sees is things like, you know, the model of phone, the serial number, the operating system, he's got to know that and he's going to look at the work apps that you've downloaded and we're going to talk a little bit more about those as we go through as well. Once you've accepted that, well, once you've read it, you click on continue, then you're going to accept it. It'll set up your work profile, it just takes a moment or two. Once you've clicked on accept and continue, you'll move on to the next one. Just a reassurance again, that only the things that are to do with work are available. And then you'll click once onto next, you get that little picture, the little icon, it just, it's there for a moment or two, flicks away. And then it's told you it's created your work profile, there's three steps you do. When you press continue on this step, it will activate your work profile and that automatically updates your device settings. The one thing I would say, and you know, depending upon how applicable it is to you, I don't know, but I do need to tell you, once you've clicked on continue, you need to tell us what type of device it is, i.e. is it your own one or is it a company owned one? And you've got those options there to select, haven't you? You cannot do this on what's called a jailbroken telephone or device. So that generally applies to an iPhone, I think. And it refers to the process of removing all of the, the manufacturer's restrictions on downloading unauthorised apps, that sort of thing, you know, it's the hackers again, isn't it? If you're a hacker, you know what I meant by jailbroken straight away. Any illegally obtained devices as well, you know, you've bought one off a, off a mate at a pub, because you can go to pubs now, you might have bought one there, but you're not going to be able to, to stick that on the network. Once you've put that in, click onto done. And I couldn't screenshot these bits because this is kind of security protected, it doesn't let you screenshot these. So it just basically confirms you're all set, you think, great, I'm done. And then you just get a reminder that, of the information you entered about owning the device and the fact that, yeah, it's in compliance and, and when it was last checked. If you check your device settings, it's just pretty much going to tell you that same thing. I noticed when I did this that I got a little company portal icon that appeared at the top in my notification area. I clicked onto that little link and it opened up the app and it recognised me straight away and it gave me the option of getting some apps. You don't have to click on that message, you can, you know, when you next go and open the company portal, it will come to this page because all you've got there is somebody to open the gate for you, you haven't actually gone in and chosen where you want to sit, the things you want to use. So you would need to perhaps get some apps. And of course, the app that we're all using is going to be Teams, isn't it? So it'll ask you for your lock screen password again, don't forget all of these are available as a video afterwards and I'll, I'll get the PowerPoint up there as well, because there's no notes or comments on it, it really is just the pictures. And I'll show you where the existing documentation is, which is perfectly fine. You might get an extra little notification window called work mode. Obviously, there's a line through that, so I wasn't on work mode when I, when I took that picture. And it does seem to sort of turn itself off after a bit of sort of idle time as well. But you do still get your notifications, like your Teams notifications and stuff, really up to you if you, if you want to read them on your phone, if you're out on the go. So again, going to your preferred app provider, the one that you have to go to, find Microsoft Teams, install it. And when you open it, it'll ask you to sign in and you know that you need to sign in with your Birmingham City Council email address. And once you've signed in, you'll have to enter your ADDM username and password again because we're, we're setting up Teams this time. And then once you've signed in with your password, you'll be texted a code to the device. Now, obviously I was using a phone, so I got, I got a text message on there and you can see the little text message notification. Didn't have to close anything, I just sort of brought it down, it gave me an option to paste it in. So I pasted the code straight in and I was then able to verify it. And I was in Teams. And I think that very day as well, I had to go out and I was in a meeting which was due to end at a certain time and that was the time I was, that was the time I needed to go out because we, we were running low on balsamic infused quinoa, organic quinoa as well. So I had to go down to Waitrose at Bank Green to, to get some and I was able to rejoin the meeting using my, my mobile device. Then I thought, well, OneNote's quite useful because it's got that dictation option in it. So if I am on the go, I don't want to be typing stuff, I might as well just, just enter my notes with my voice and I did that as well. And I think my colleague Manya showed you how to do that in the Office 365 102 session, which was earlier this week on, on Tuesday or Wednesday. You do need to set up a PIN for some of the applications. It says here that the PIN must contain numeric characters only, numeric characters only, so numbers, and that's exactly what I did. And I didn't use my screen unlock number because my daughter knows what that is, other people know what that is as well, if it's ever locked. So don't necessarily want her going in and dictating a load of messages about wanting a pony or, or something, she wants a cat actually, and I can't find the sort of cat she wants. So I was thinking I'd just get a white cat and then she can pretty much paint it, can't she? And that's another activity she can do. I'm not cruel, I wouldn't use acrylics, obviously, a water based paint. So bring in your own device, let's have a quick recap on that. There's my up to the minute device that I carry around in my pocket for mobile communication. You've just seen how we do it, it was pretty straightforward, I think. You went to your app provider on the mobile device, on the mobile device that you wanted to install it onto. You downloaded it, you installed it and you opened it. And then when prompted, you needed to enter your credentials via the, your ADDM credentials. And it also asked you to set a PIN as well, didn't it? Now, we're going to just leave here for a moment and we're going to have a little look at the information that's available on the internet for bringing your own device, we're still looking at that. I've saved a couple today for us to go into, just to make it a bit quicker. So the information that is published on the internet for bring your own device is pretty much what I've been telling you. And you've got your policy document for Intune. So I'm not going to, I'm not plagiarising anybody's work, I'll just show you this one. So just take a moment to download it and open it. If it does take too long, I'll cancel it, save it and open it. But the document really just takes you through the steps that I made as well, showing you them in PowerPoint. Yeah, it's taken a bit too long to download for my liking and I think it's, I think it's crashed, so hopefully you can still hear me, there it is in the background. So it takes you through the, the various steps and there's various links in there to user guidance and stuff like that to enable you to, to add it to your device yourself. There you go. So have a little look at that, bring your own device, although I don't think you'll be bringing it anywhere. And it tells you whether, you know, the difference between using it on an app or using it on Android. And there's also within the internet site, there are the instructions on loading it to an iPhone or loading it to your Android phone. And this is where you'll see something that looks quite similar to what I did. This was done very professionally, look a bit more professionally than mine in fact, back in March, I think, or February, there were a couple of little changes as I went through the setup, a couple of times where I asked you to set up that screen lock thing as well. So just worth having a look at the updated one, but this one, you know, goodness me, you know, pretty much anyone could follow those instructions and it is a case sometimes of simply following the instructions, one, two, three, four, five. You know, if something goes wrong, perhaps you've missed out a step, perhaps there was something which you, you know, weren't aware of at the beginning of that process. So let's go back to the PowerPoints, we're going to move on now and have a look at a couple of other bits. So we've covered bringing your own device, obviously, that's not really the one I carry around in my pocket, it's much bigger than that. Go to the app store that you use, download, install and open, enter your credentials when prompted. Okay, so look, bit of IT stuff there, wasn't there? Bit of technical stuff. Let's have a little focus on, on something else in a, in a working at home session, I think this is where this belongs, so wellbeing. Mindfulness, wellbeing, physical wellbeing, mental wellbeing, physical health, mental health, those sort of things, just as important, totally connected. So within Yama, there's your mindfulness and wellbeing group and that's run by the mindfulness and wellbeing team, we're going to have a little look at them as well. They exist as a team in their own right. There's the learning pool resources too, we'll go back to learning pool, I've got a couple of links there. We'll have a look at the active wellbeing group on there. And there's also an external partner as well, the Active Wellbeing Society, they've got quite a presence online and I'll, I'll show you their website, I'll show you their YouTube and I'll show you their Facebook, we won't dwell on it, but we'll have a quick look, it's well worth knowing what's out there. Starting off with our own internal mindfulness team, let's, let's click once on the, the link there and have a look, hopefully it'll open up. Just take a moment or two, there we go. If you're not logged into Yama, of course, you'll need to get logged into Yama before you can use it. Once you are logged in, over on the left hand side, over here, I'm just pointing out, you'll see any groups that you're already a member of. You might not have known, there's a gardening club, there's a photography club, all that sort of stuff as well. And if you're searching for a particular club, you've got a search field at the top, I'm looking for the, the team employee health and wellbeing. So if I just type in the word well, I should get a few things, yeah, look, there's a, there's a housing, health, safety and wellbeing news. And there's also an employee health and wellbeing option and that's the one I want to go to. So I'm going to click onto that option. And it'll always show me the, the most recent posts because that's how it defaults, you can change it. And we had a Yama session, didn't we, the, the other day, again in one of Manya's sessions? The latest thing there is about, oh yeah, about quitting smoking. Yeah, Della has built on a decade worth of stock. I've got about four decades worth of smoking, so I think that out trumps Bella. Over on the right hand side, let's have a look at some of these links now. All of these links have been looked at and verified by the Health and Wellbeing Team, Employee Health and Wellbeing Team. I'm only going to use one of these, but let's just. I'm only going to use one of these, but let's just make sure that we know they're there first of all. So within Yama, you don't have to use Yama to access it, but the links are here for you. You've got a link to the NHS website, their mood zone. That's that's very much. Your mental health controlled by your physical health as well. There's a bit about taking action for a happier world. Look, you know, these things are aimed at you. They're aimed at your. Your circle around you. I was chatting to somebody online yesterday at work through Teams. And, you know, I won't, you know, mention a name or anything, but she's desperate to get back to work. And because she's got she's got a house full of people. So, you know, she's got partners, she's got kids and staff and 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 their and their sort of partners and stuff as well. So and she said it's a wonderful, caring, lovely environment. She feels blessed being at home. But my goodness, doesn't she want to get back into the office as well? So that ain't going to happen anytime really soon for her. So. Maybe address things and we're going to talk a little bit about about keeping in touch a little bit later on as well. Mindfulness Resources and Five Steps to Mental Wellbeing, they're NHS as well, they're worth a look at, but. I mentioned, didn't I, earlier, the Active Wellbeing Society? I'm not going to use that link directly from here. I'll open it independently because I had a few problems with Internet Explorer. And the Active Wellbeing website, so I had to open it up in a different. Internet browser, had to open up in Google. Now, I have got it open, but before we we go off and and look at the Active Wellbeing Society. Let's also have a look at the learning pool option. So. If I click on to that one, learning pool, so we know where Yama is and we know where the learning pool is, don't we? We know the addresses for those, but here they are anyway. So by going to the learning pool and again, I. Just log in. Sometimes it remembers that you logged in, sometimes it. Doesn't and you just need to log back in or whatever. It depends upon what you've ticked and. If you have a look at this news section, that's the first time I've pointed this out in the session, but it's over there on the right hand side. It's just below the headline news. You can navigate to the right, navigate to the left, take you through those options. So. There are four options and I just want to go through them. You've got your Birmingham City Council resources and services for. Services that may have been affected and particularly employees who have been affected by coronavirus. A link to the the main news site. You've got a link to the Health and Wellbeing Advice Internal Team. We're going to have a look at them. And you've also got a link to that modern workplace hub that I keep mentioning on every session. Let's go and have a look at the Health and Wellbeing Advice Team. That was pretty quick. And this is their their latest one, the Hits and Tips for May. So they come out every couple of months and there's a really lot of useful information in there as well. A really thorough document linking you up with various agencies and and telling you what's in store. And I think before March, you'd have said to me, oh, go and have a look at the Health and Wellbeing Team. And I'd have probably said, yeah, yeah, okay. And I probably wouldn't have bothered looking. But everything is on its head. Everything's been turned upside down for me. So I come here quite a lot. I particularly enjoyed the parents surviving lockdown session. That was. Go and have a look at it because the one thing you'll get out from that is that you're not alone. The other people are having to go through it too. The team are going to love me for leaving their pictures up there, aren't they? As you scroll down, you'll see the the various bits and pieces that are in there. So. If something there appeals to you, please get on and please use it. If you just want to speak to somebody independent, that's not going to judge you in any way. Just give them a ring, okay? Employee Assistance Programme. You'll have heard about mental health first aiders as well. Just because we're not in the office, it doesn't mean that they've lost their visibility. So. You know, have a little look at Yama, find out where they are, contact the team, their email address is up here for you. And we've got some chaplaincy, haven't we? And. You 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 don't have to have a strong faith in something to benefit from something that the the chaplaincy can do. It's. A bit more of a sort of local service for people that perhaps just might want to have a talk about something. It doesn't have to be. Faith based at all. People there who are who are there to listen to you. Okay, let's not get too. Into that because you've got your time and I'm conscious of of using it up as well. So. I want us to have a look at the Active Wellbeing Society next. We're nearly through what we're going to. Be having a look at this afternoon, but we're just going to take a moment or two to have a look at that. So I've already opened up a couple of a couple of pages. About the Active Wellbeing Society. I'll just go to the homepage. If you Googled or Binged or whatever browser you're using, if you if you search for the Active Wellbeing Society, you would find their link and. Their website is the T H E, the word the, and then their initials, A W S. The ActiveWellbeingSociety.co.uk There's quite a lot going on on the website. I didn't open it in Internet Explorer, as I mentioned earlier, because I was having some some problems with Internet Explorer. But if you were to, there's a lot to look at and I'm not going to show you everything on here because you can have a look at yourself in your own time and. At your own pace, really, is is more what I mean. But if you have a look at our projects. There's quite a few tiles here about the stuff they're doing. And some of these are starting to come back online. So obviously, a lot of the outdoor things can start happening again. And oh, that looks painful, the running one. But I had a chat to a really helpful person, Lorna, from the Active Wellbeing Society this week, and she pointed me. Towards some of these resources that we're going to have a look at in a minute. But there is a walking group. I think the group changes and the the place where they change, the place where they walk changes. King's Norton Nature Reserve or something like that, I think, on the twentieth. I'm not sure. But if you contact the the Wellbeing Society, they will let you know. And don't go out and buy an expensive piece of machinery if you just need to to use it once or twice. You might want to. Have a look at the Share Shacks. Careful how you say that. You might want to have a look there. And if you're almost on bust, you know, maybe not be the best time to go and buy one. So perhaps you want to borrow one, that sort of thing. We're just going to have a look at virtual wellbeing. There's quite a few places to get these things. And within virtual wellbeing, there's a, oh, coronavirus, just in case you you weren't aware. Down towards the bottom of that page, you've got some tiles there. So. There's some online workout videos. I think that's under the auspices of This Girl Can, one of the Sport England campaigns. You may have heard of that. And and there's a a link for Sport England's dedicated page for all sorts of workouts, any age or. Or anything. Yeah, we love this one in our house, the You're Welcome one. We really like that one, actually. It's it's good fun to do, you know, you think, oh, I've just put the telly on for them again. I don't know what to do. I don't know what to do. Well. Whack on one of these on on YouTube and have a look there. I mentioned YouTube. They've got a a strong presence on YouTube. So. Just show you what to expect if you go to them. Pepper Blooming Pig had enough of them, but. Have a look at the Active Wellbeing Society. There you go. They've got this this poet laureate. It's amazing. He's 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 a proper boxer. And he does a bit of poetry and a bit of boxing as you go along for adults and children. There's a drum and drum and bass workout. I don't know why you'd want to work out with a fish, but. There's all sorts of stuff there, isn't there? Even Pilates and all of that. So. If you, yeah, there's your Tai Chi latte. If you've never given it a go before, have a go. Really, it's well worth it. Swing fit. I had no idea what that is. Certainly wasn't what I thought it was. Up here, I've opened a page for, go away, for, oh, yes, look, can't get away from the Tai Chi. This is the Active Wellbeing Society's homepage on Facebook. And all the, I think all the young people are on Facebook, aren't they? If the if you're not on Facebook, you don't have to be logged in to access this stuff, by the way. One of my friends is, well, I have one friend. It will be my friend who's on this. Amazing. Right, anyway. So they've got the resources, they've got the videos there and they're fantastic. You can dip in and out of them. You don't have to do the. The whole thing. You won't be guilt tripped. Don't worry about that. There's various links to other organisations around Brum Birmingham as well. With the hashtag Brum Together, a fantastic resource endorsed by Birmingham City Council. So please make sure you do it. Don't. When I originally searched for this, something comes up called the Wellbeing Project. That's not what you want. You want the Active Wellbeing Society, the Wellbeing Project. I delved a little bit into that. It looks as though it's probably. Sort of Scientology. And if that's your thing, fantastic. But just sort of draw your attention to that one. So. We've used a bit of time up here, haven't we, for mindfulness, for wellbeing? And I think that's a measure of. How important certainly I take it. And and how important, of course, you should take it yourself. We, you know, we we do things to make ourselves and other people happy, don't we? And it's difficult sometimes to to keep on to relentlessly be happier, relentlessly be happy. And we're not suggesting that at all. We're just saying, find a bit of time for yourself. Do something that enriches you. Do something that makes you feel better. We talked last time, didn't we, about? The behaviours that help you, you know, think about the behaviours which make you feel good. Not too, but I'm not talking about the pub because ultimately, if you have too much good in the pub, the next day isn't always so good. So think about those things as you as you. Carry on in this this new way of of working at home. Think about yourself as well. Take a bit of time out to do that. Before we look at the health and safety advice, so sit up straight, pay attention, that sort of thing. Just take a moment just to tell you what's happening next week. So. I think I think my team, the team I'm in, there's four of us. We're only a small team. We don't all work. Every day of the week either, some of us full time, some of us part time and. You know, overtime, that sort of stuff and school holidays coming up, but some of us haven't seen each other since, I think, before Christmas. So we're actually going to meet up and we're going to have a coffee in town. It's not illegal. We can do it. And and we're going to combine it with collecting our chairs. And I'll talk a little bit more about what we hope to do when we get there. But look at this lady, look at this woman. She is sitting perfectly. Her head is pretty much level with the screen. Her wrists are straight. She's not having to elevate them up or 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 force them downwards. Nice and straight, forming a nice straight angle. And there's equal pressure, isn't there? The pressure points at the back on your bum, on your your glutes maximus. That pressure should be equal and that looks to be a good sitting position. Don't forget, you've got the Health and Safety Website Guidance if you need to go to it. We're going to just open it up one more time. I've saved it somewhere as a favourite. So let me just grab that. Links available in the PowerPoint, the links available in the video. Takes you to the Health and Safety webpage. And you'll see where I got the idea about head level, wrist straight, equal pressure. There's a video there shows you how to really go about setting things up. We had a quick look at this last time, but just wanted to remind you of it before we finish today. So, yeah. The team and I are meeting up. We're going to, we're not going into the office. We're not going to camp outside or. Stick a tent outside the council house or anything. We're not quite that sad, but we do want to meet up face to face. It's been ages. We just keep seeing each other flat on a screen and, you know, we want to see each other in 3D for the first time in. In what will be six to seven months for some of us. And I'm really excited about it. I wonder if any of you are. Thinking about arranging anything like that with your colleagues. I mean, we we have arguments and disagreements and huffs all about work in our team and. Sometimes our attitudes, well, mainly my attitude mostly, but you know what? I can't wait to meet them. And it it's a group of people that I know that I work with and respect and I didn't think I'd feel like this, but I do. And I, yeah, I can't wait to meet them. I doubt we'll help the economy grow and recover by getting our £10 off at Nando's or whatever it is, but. I think there are things we can all do to try and get a bit of that normality back, even if you're. You're you're meeting up for a coffee outside Starbucks or something in, there are other coffee places available. On New Street or or wherever, perhaps maybe avoid the town centre, maybe meet up somewhere else. But now more than ever, it's important to remember that you do have a network around you. It might be a bit invisible at the moment because you might just be sitting on your screen. Going through Teams, attending meeting after meeting, sharing document after document. But please, take the time to do what works for you, to what makes you happy. Hey, I said I wouldn't keep you for the whole hour, so I think I'm gonna pretty much sign off now. Thank you for your time. What did we see? Bit about personal and professional development, getting onto learning pool, skilling ourselves up. Bringing your own device, downloading and setting up teams and applications on a mobile device. It works, use it. If you've got a nip out and pick your kids up from school and you're in the middle of a chat or something like that, you can still maintain that chat while you're walking down the road. Don't. Use it while you're driving, obviously. Mental and physical wellbeing, probably the most important element of of working at home for you holistically around your whole being. Bit of a health and safety reminder. And then I'm not trying to make you jealous by saying that I'm meeting up with my colleagues for a cup of coffee, but there's nothing to stop you doing the same somewhere, is it? Doesn't have to be virtual now. You can you you can meet up, start saying hello face to face. Entirely up to you. Use the feedback section there. Use the questions and answer session. It's going to be open for a couple of minutes longer. Let us know what you want to see. If you don't get a chance doing it live, you know me, you know Matthew Emson, drop me an email. I'll do my best to ignore it until you've sent it a few times and then I'll I'll open it up and respond to you. So please, everybody, whatever you're going to do this weekend, have a smashing time. Stay happy, stay safe. Bye bye, everybody.